Recording in progress.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 23rd. We like to call today's county board meeting to order. For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. And approximately in the back on the west wall is an automatic defibrillator for health reasons. We'd like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start today, I wanted to say quick on behalf of the board that we like to send our condolences and regards out to the family of the, of our chair. She was encouraged not to come today even though she wanted to, so we hope that her and her family recovering well and things will be all right till she gets back next week. With that, we will go into roll call for the Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent, a family, passing of a family member. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. Item B is a call for a meeting set Tuesday, August 30th as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Board, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item three is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We have items D, E, F, G, H, and I for approval. Is there a motion to approve those items? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Hear no questions. That motion includes a German also. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call to order the August Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair.
Here. Item two, item one, sorry, is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held on Tuesday, July 19th. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item two is citizens' comments for the Board of Corrections. Are there any Board of Corrections-related items that citizens would like to discuss, that a citizen would like to discuss that aren't officially listed on the Board of Corrections' agenda? Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We've got item three and the report from Director Meyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. After the first month of the fiscal year, I'm sorry, jumping into enclosure number one, Administrative Services. After the first month of the fiscal year, we are $63,140 under budget. $406,208 were spent on overtime costs during July. And that is a decrease of approximately $40,000 from the previous month. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of 20 individuals in Community Corrections and saved 105 bed days in the jail. The 24/7 Sobriety Program admitted 89 individuals. There were 3,439 breath tests. 12 were positive for alcohol use and 13 individuals no-showed. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.9%. There were 51 individuals monitored for 1,287 total days of SCRAM monitoring. And there were zero no-shows, zero tampering violations, and one alcohol violation. And the SCRAM compliance rate was also 99.9%. There were 1,043 drug tests administered with 115 violations and 61 no-shows. And 24 drug testing patches were submitted for testing with two violations. And I wanted to mention, as I've said kind of throughout the year during my, my reports to each month, our population has trended down a little bit. And it's always difficult to quantify particularly why. But I think the 24/7 program's growth has had an impact. There are, as of this morning, 465 people on that program. It keeps just steadily, slowly growing month after month. And I believe that that means that we are, that is one tangible thing I can point to as a reason for population reduction, that some folks who would have been detained pre-trial are being monitored on that program. Coincidentally, well, not coincidentally, but the, the revenues projected, as this is a participant-funded program, if it stays around these numbers, will bring $660,000 in revenue to Douglas County by, through the operations of this program. Work release admitted 13 individuals and house arrest admitted 56. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 16 individuals and two achieved a GED. 119 individuals were served by Reentry Services and therapeutic communities. And one of them achieved a GED. Pre-trial services referred 21 individuals for priority prosecution, saving 112 bed days. 247 individuals were placed on pre-trial release. Overall, 1,096 individuals were managed on pre-trial release with an 85% compliance rate. 97 individuals visited the law library. And our enhanced pre-trial release program is now scheduled to launch on September 12th. There have been some delays that were a bit out of our control related to getting our staff access to the national criminal justice databases. We have now developed an alternative process to use existing resources, which will suffice until our new staff are able to access those databases. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Our regular documentation for, is being collected for all of our compliance practices. Our Prison Rape Elimination Act, or PRIA, audit was conducted, was completed in July. The auditor did not report any significant findings, though we are awaiting the final written report. And our annual security audit, which is conducted in partnership with the Nebraska Department of Correctional Services, is scheduled for September. Personnel. enclosure number four. 12 officers below the rank of sergeant, and, which included one retirement, left employment in July. And we'd like to offer Officer, congratulations to Officer Pamela Johnson on her retirement after 18 years of service to Douglas County. Eight new officers have now graduated from our academy on August 12th. And we began another, and at this time, an accelerated academy, which had nine officers began their employment with us yesterday. And kind of leading into my next bullet point. We made an agreement with the FOP Lodge Eight to utilize 10-hour training days to shorten future academies by one week. This will provide quicker relief to our existing staff by getting those officers trained a little more quickly and filling shifts. We had numerous staff who were recognized for second quarter meritorious service awards, and those are included in enclosure number four. And importantly, more than 25 staff volunteered to be trained as peer support specialists on all shifts. I will actually probably next month bring at least one or two of them to the board meeting as they have now completed their training. I think this is a tremendous show of unity and dedication to the well-being of their coworkers. And this is one of several initiatives we have in the works to support our staff to build their resiliency and hopefully improve retention. Enclosure number five, Population. There are 1,377 admissions. That was an increase. Our releases were 1,285. We had a high count of 1,131 and a low count of 1,001. And our average daily population was 1,073, and that was an increase of 56. But despite that increase, we are still trending lower than we did a year ago. There were 90 custodial bed sanction days, which was a decrease. The US Marshal population remained stable. The felony pre-trial population increased, as did the misdemeanor pre-trial population. Probation violations increased slightly. 20% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 65% of our population were minorities. 15% of our population were female. And 16% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, Medical. There are 1,174 intake screenings and there were 341 physical and health assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergent medical care. Seven of those involved 911. There were 10 hospital admissions, which resulted in 35 combined days of hospitalization. And there were 40 off-site specialty medical appointments. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 147 initial psychiatric appointments. 17 initial mental health assessments. 114 mental health infirmary placements. There were 148 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were six referrals to the Board of Mental Health, and five individuals were transferred to long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items, we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had eight known cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population during the month of July, which resulted in the quarantine of several housing units. I believe this next bullet is wrong. I think the number is actually higher than five. But it was between five and 10 staff members tested positive throughout the month. Our staff vaccination rate remains at approximately 75%. During July, we administered 27 first doses of Moderna, five second doses of Moderna, and eight booster doses of Moderna. And separately, at Community Corrections, with the Douglas County Health Department, we administered 23 doses of Moderna. And as of August 1st, we have fully vaccinated 1,765 incarcerated individuals and provided 208 boosters to incarcerated individuals. Due to the CDC recently revising guidance, we are currently reassessing our COVID risk and response protocols. We are working with our medical director, Dr. Anthony Montague, and our, and the Douglas County Health Director, Dr. Lindsay Hughes, to refine our processes. And finally, full deployment of our body-worn cameras is nearing completion. It will be done within the next couple of weeks. And our inmate tablet project, which I'll also bring before the board to demonstrate in a coming report, is, is also getting close to fruition with a projected go live, go-live date sometime around or before October 15th. And with that, I am ready for your questions.
We have Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this. Going back to where you started in terms of the census population being down. I note that, I think the average daily population number that's quoted on page two is 1,073. Indication that's down 56. Is that month over month from?
You know what, Commissioner? That's a typo. I should have said an increase, an increase of 56.
Increase of 56.
My mistake.
Month over month?
Just from June. Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, and I don't expect you to have this off the top of your head, but a real good indicator for us would be year over year.
Yeah. What I can tell you, I can give you a reasonable, we have been trending anywhere 100 to, to, over 200 people less on a year-to-year comparing to '22.
If you could, I mean, just send us that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's great. And it goes to what you were saying is, you know, it's difficult to calibrate the impact of these programs that you've initiated. But something's affecting the population and it's going in the right direction, so. If we could see that year-over-year figure, and, you know, August, it seems to me, if memory serves, is usually the high month of the year, so.
It, it, like, August and into early September, and then things start to typically gradually decrease after that. There is some graphs on page 35 in enclosure number five that will give you some of the trend data over the course of the last
Okay.
Year.
That population history graph on page 35?
Yes. And even the one right above that might be a little clearer.
Average daily population?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, it shows, you know, kind of a downward trend, and that's a, that's a good thing. If, when you come before us next month, you'll have the August to August figures, I mean, that'll give us kind of the high point to the high point. And that's great. The staffing, if I see correctly on page seven, I believe, indicates that our authorized staffing for the department is 494, and on hand, we have 413, which is about 83%. But among CO1s, the, you know, frontline correction officer 1s. I'm trying to find that, page seven, I believe.
Yep. 81.1% of officers.
Okay. You've got correction officers, CO1s, authorized 349, and we're only at 283 for 81%, which is kind of a, except for the management and support cohort and the inmate services associate, which are smaller. The lowest of the big cohorts of staff.
That's correct.
And that's where that 12 losses was impacted most?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So those are people who most recently joined us and left, right?
Well, I don't, some of them may have been, they may, they're not necessarily, I guess I want to make sure I understand your question. They, they aren't necessarily the people who most recently joined us, but they are people who have left employment during the month of July. The, the length of time that they were with us will vary greatly.
But the 12 that left, were they all CO1s?
They, they were all either CO1s or CO2s. That, we, we use that. We don't separate out CO1s and 2s for you on the report, but they were all either CO1s or CO2s.
And that's this category that's authorized at 349?
Correct, that's correct. That's the combined CO1 and CO2 total.
So, that's kind of concerning, and I know you're working hard on that. Indicating that that possibly is something that we should maybe drill down on a little bit to see if we can do better. Finally, the majority-minority population that you indicated is over 65% remains extremely high.
30 seconds.
And.
It does, and it's caused me, when I look at our numbers with pre-trial, in particular, 24/7 going up. I, I think it's given me pause to, to think about, do we, do we need to take a look at at something we've never done, is the breakdown of people who are being, or who are able to take advantage of the pre-trial services? Even though there may not be any more, in an absolute sense, minorities in our jail, their percentage is going up perhaps because of more people who aren't minorities might be getting out on pre-trial.
Thank you.
Time. Thank you. Commissioner Friend, then Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mike, the, one of the, among other things that, that I guess worry Commissioners or, or worry people at the county level, and, and also ultimately, citizens in the counties. We go to enclosure four and we go to personnel. It worries me greatly on a, on a pretty consistent basis. One of the questions I wanted to ask, and I, and I don't know if you and I have really ever gone ad nauseam about it. If you, if you're behind and you put a, a group through an academy, the academy's taking X amount of time, when somebody leaves the academy, what does the OJT, what is the on-the-job training process look like? And how quickly can you get a CO1 up to the, up to the level? Because what I'm worried about, simply put, is when we're behind, how long is it going to take us to catch up?
Right.
Right?
So, we've been here before, actually during my tenure. In, in 2019, our, we were down, I think even a little bit more than where we were, are today. We worked with the union, as we just did now, to have them make an exception to how overtime is awarded so that the academy class can work 10-hour days instead of eight-hour days, to accelerate the process. The difference between 2019 and now is in 2019, we were able to attract classes where we were picking, sitting a class between 20 and 25 people and had like 200 applicants to choose from to do so. And those numbers are now drastically depleted. And we are consistently now running classes, you know, anywhere, like currently, we started nine yesterday. And, and we usually, you know, historically have done at least double that. So, in, in 2019, we were able to go from about this, you know, about 70 officers short, give or take, to fully staffed for a brief period of time in about five months using that accelerated academy. I, I don't expect it to go that quickly this time.
So, are you categorizing, and this is a little bit of semantics, but are you categorizing fully staffed when you have a certain amount of officers on, in and on-the-job training? I wouldn't even call it a probation period. They're, they're working through things after the training academy.
We defined fully staffed when we hit our authorized number, so that could mean that there are some still in the academy. They, they, I mean, in reality, they're not on the floors yet. And to, and to maybe answer your other, we didn't directly ask this, but right now, the, we've, we've, with the smaller numbers, and we can do a lot more one-on-one attention for the training purposes. That's one of the justifications we use for accelerating the academy. The academy is now four weeks of classroom kind of hands-on training, and then there's two weeks of field training after that before they are working on their own. So it's a six-week process right now.
Okay, I, we'll, and we'll talk offline in, in more detail, and thanks for the information, Mike.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyle, then Commissioner Morgan.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation, Mike. Just a, a couple of things. One thing is whenever you present this, it always surprises me, on the last page, we talk about mental health acuity. And in this, in this particular month, June of 2022, I should say, 291 out of about 1,000 inmates that are there have what's called a serious mental illness, like schizoaffective disorder, schizophrenia, or other type of psychosis. And that 43, almost 44% of the population has been diagnosed with a mental illness. And, and I think it just, it just stresses the importance of the fact you have something like the, the peer support groups, because that's tough to deal with anyway. And I know that our mental health facility is trying to work with you to, to take care of those, those types of folks. Just kind of as an aside from that, you, you also put in there that 16% of the population is homeless or near homeless. If that's the case, are, are, first of all, are these folks that are, are, belong in corrections for things they've done? Or are they just homeless? And then afterwards, what's, what's available to, to make sure that they can be discharged?
Well, they, they do have to be charged with a crime to, to join our, to join us. But, you know, there's a lot of trespassings, refusing to leave, you know. Those are, and they're typically in and out in a fairly short amount of time. And those are the individuals who we might term familiar faces because that we see them regularly. You know, we, we have a program called Familiar Faces, which oftentimes will, will target this group. And our reentry services staff will, are also working with the shelters and other service providers to try to connect individuals with services. One of the challenging things is that this group tends to have a quick turnaround. So sometimes it's difficult, like, there, there may, they may get, by the time they do initial court appearance, they may be released with, given one or two days of a sentence and doing, and time served. And so it's a tremendous challenge to be nimble enough to try and put something in place, you know, in, in that amount of time. We're currently interviewing four, we have a vacancy or two right now in reentry services. And one of those positions is a discharge triage position. And that's where we try to, once we know somebody's going to be released, we try to quickly arrange as many services as possible for them that they're willing to accept on their way out of the jail. And, you know, we have had some success with that in the past in getting some people connected with some services. So we're anxious to get that position filled and going again.
All right. Good. Thanks.
The same questions Commissioner Boyle mentioned. I know you said the homeless around 160, which would be 15% roughly. Are we working with the Open Door Mission and some others on that? And maybe at some point, you know, you may want to visit with some of us.
Sure.
On the board to what we can do with ARPA monies or something else to work with them and those organizations a little bit more.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. We do, we do engage with all of the, the homeless shelters and other and agencies like Community Alliance, who serve a, a very high overlap of those who are chronically mentally ill and also may likely be homeless, or at least periodically homeless. We do everything we can to connect the people who, with those community supports before they're released.
And then the other thing, if I'm looking at this correctly, about 80% of the people incarcerated have a mental illness. I mean, it, the monthly average is around the 831, June 893 for
Yeah.
Being diagnosed with mental illness.
And that, and Commissioner, that's a cumulative total throughout the month. That may not, the, the pyramid act, on the next page, shows the actual truer percentage. You know, so it's just 43.75% of a day, average daily population has a mental illness over the course of the month of the individuals who we had in custody, who may not have been present on each day of the month. You, you get to that number of 893. So we typically, you know, we're looking at 400-plus individuals on a daily basis. But over the course of the month, it's closer to 900.
Which would still be 40%.
Yes.
And then the other thing, it's 3% or 4% with the serious.
Correct.
Mental illness. And are you working with different community services in that area besides just the county people sharing?
Yes. I mean, our prob- Yes. I mean, our prob, the, the Community Mental Health Center is probably our biggest partner in terms of collaboration on kind of release planning and that continuum of care. But they are certainly not the only partner that we work with. Like I mentioned, Community Alliance, most, a lot, there's a lot of treatment centers that we refer people to as well as, you know, more and more of the homeless shelters have developed a continuum of care within their own services. And so, there's a lot of treatment programs that go on as a, as a division, if you will, of maybe the Sienna Francis House that we make referrals to as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, let me ask you one last question. So, this twenty-four-seven program, who makes the decision on who is admitted?
That is strictly judicial decision. When individuals go before, typically, almost, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's done at their initial bond setting. And the judge will offer twenty-four-seven as a condition which might be used in conjunction with a lower amount of bond than what they might have had without that supervision. Or they'll do it in lieu of bond altogether. And just say, if you participate in this program, we'll release you without a cash bond.
So, it's voluntary?
I'm sorry?
It's voluntary?
It's voluntary, yeah. The individuals do not, we can't force them to do it.
I'm just curious, because the way I was told about most of these programs like that, the higher the success rate, the less risk. So, what I'm saying is, it seems like all these are like in a ninety-nine. So, I guess the judge making, is making the call is out of their control. But it seems like there's some room for probably more people because it's like a hundred percent success rate.
So, I, it's true. It is a very successful program. The drug testing is not as successful as alcohol protocols, but I, I, we knew that when we, when we started that, that, to not to expect the same results. But the, I, I think that the, the new pre-trial program will widen the net a little bit in terms of, they can continue to use twenty-four-seven, but also have a variety of other services as well under the umbrella of pre-trial supervision.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it? Think you're good?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Corrections meeting? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims. Item A is approval of the minutes for the Tuesday, August ninth meeting. And Og, and item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Is there motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is it second? Second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go to item two, which is consent agenda. Let's, let me know from the start, item N two is being pulled because that item is completed?
Yes, Trece York County Attorney's Office. It's my understanding that's already been signed by the purchasing agent for N two, so we don't want to have a duplicate agreement out there with a different start date.
Thank you. And item three, item F, three and four should be pulled.
Laid over if we, if we make.
Sorry, laid over because they're still working out contract negotiations.
Three and four.
Three and four, four, I mean, F, three and four. Also, I need to pull F two to vote on separately. So, we'll vote on F two separately, Mr. Clerk. Let me know when you've got that in there.
F two, F three, F four, and N?
N two.
N two, okay.
You want G off? Okay. Commissioner Boyle has requested G off. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which has sixteen items, with the removal of F two to be voted on separately, F, G to be voted on separately? F three and four are laid over, and F two is completed. You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, F two through F four, G and N two are not included in this vote.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is it second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Excuse me.
Okay. Wade, Larry, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We have on here, and I believe Mark Lafore is online, an agreement between Douglas County Youth Center and Omaha Public Schools for Title One funding designated for services to aid students who are classified as homeless. And we just came off a discussion of homeless individuals in our correction center. Mark, I was just wondering if you have any knowledge of what services we would provide pursuant to this agreement so people would know, homeless kids in the youth center?
Thanks for asking the question, Commissioner. The purpose is to assure that the homeless individuals are getting their education services while at the youth center. And it, it just assures that everyone that comes in is, is receiving a full complement of education.
So, do we have a significant number of homeless kids in the youth center? Can you tell?
That's, that's not a stat that we, we currently keep, but that may be something worth checking into. But overall, most of the youth who arrive here at the youth center have a residence home of address. Occasionally, we, we find some who may have been on the run, but those individuals also are found with a residence home address. That for the homeless individuals, we see it's more with our migrant population that, that we see when homeless occasionally come into the facility.
Okay, so could you give us an example of what Omaha Public Schools Title One services are to this group of young people who are homeless, neglected, or delinquent?
Well, I can't speak exactly to the full stretch of the school district, but they reach out for anyone who has additional needs for Wi-Fi services as well as additional materials, study materials. And, and also, those individuals are also accessed for the individual education plan.
And is this an ongoing continuation of an ongoing agreement that we've had with OPS for some time?
Yes, this, it's similar to the agreement that we've had over the past thirteen years.
Thank you. I have one other question on another item. Item E is a resolution approving an agreement with Carson West Pavandra Architects for Douglas County Mental Health Facility Study. And we had Alpha Bonder here recently to give us the initial study that they presented to us. And I, I believe this is for phase two, as it indicates in the document of that, for twenty-seven thousand dollars. My question is, and Joe, maybe you can help us, is this an ARPA-funded initiative? Do you know?
My understanding was that this was going to be funded, you know, actually, under CARES Act, we put seven million dollars into the General Fund Reserve for Mental Health. And that's what we paid for the phase one, paid the phase one of the study with. So, if we're consistent, we'll pay phase two from, from that money.
From CARES, which was twenty, twenty, twenty-one?
Two, that was put into the General Fund Reserve.
Okay. Thank you.
One minute.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, then we have a motion to approve the agenda. You got a question on the consent agenda, Larry? Go ahead.
Thank you. Everybody's rules are different, but I thought that you're supposed to ask the audience attending if they have any comment on these consent agendas before you, before you vote. Is that correct?
That's what we're doing now.
Okay. I'd like to point out in regards to items F five through twelve, that in some point in time, all this grant money is probably going to disappear. And all of these agencies are going to have to go somewhere else for their money. What happens then? Will it be called meaning because we don't have it? Because we don't vote citizen dollars for it coming up next year? If you add all of these dollar figures here, they, they still come out of somebody's tax dollars somewhere, but that's a lot of money. And it's also probably duplicated at the city council level. It's already been somewhat funded by the United Nations and the refugee agencies with probably U.S. tax dollars. And these grants are U.S. tax dollars. But what happens when you can't get that tax dollar from the government? Are you prepared to tell these people you can't support them? And now we've got rental assistance being put into our laws, our codes, our ordinances? Isn't some of this stuff unconstitutional? You're not giving me money. You're not giving me a grant. So, maybe consider, before you vote on this, that these, some of these programs maybe should be cut back on. Thank you.
Let me say for the record that the grants that are being proposed in those items, how our grants that flow through the state, they've been continual for years, but there's a clause in all grant-funded contracts that if money runs out, the program runs out. So, that is understood. Seeing nothing else?
Commissioner, if I may, I apologize, Trece York County Attorney's Office. I just wanted for the clarity of the record that this vote does include the layover of F three and, three and four, and then you don't have to vote separately on that.
Yes, the only thing we vote on separately are F two and G.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
We'll now take F two, is there a motion to approve F two? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is it second? Second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Item G, approval of a resolution to establish the nine-one-one service, service surcharge in the amount of fifty cent per month in Douglas County as authorized by state statute. Commissioner Boyle?
I probably could have just had this pulled and discussed like Commissioner Kavanaugh did, but I was just asked, curious what this is about. So, Kathy, do you mind coming down? Is this, I read through the resolution, is this, this is affecting just landlines, cell phone lines, and it's really to help fund basic services of nine-one-one, or what's?
Kathy Allen, nine-one-one director. What this is, is just a matter of a bit of paperwork. The state statute's already given the fifty cent max for wire line surcharge. It's been in place for years. There's also a requirement by state statute that the county board has to list that amount for the next calendar year prior to September first of the current year. So, that's, it's, it's been this amount forever, and it's just a matter of following the state statute.
Okay, I think that was, it's not a new, a new surcharge. Okay, that was, that's what I wanted to know. All right, thank you. So, I make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve G by Commissioner Boyle, is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item five is citizens' comments. It's an item, it's opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioner-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
Good morning. Thank you. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I had a pleasant experience a couple of weeks ago. I went to the Dodge County Board of Commissioners. And oh my goodness, they have way different rules than you folks do. Very pleasant back-and-forth discussion between them and us. Nobody called out of order, nobody bum, giving the bums rush out for saying something slightly off. We had a long discussion and a presentation, but it wasn't presented as a presentation like your rules do. It was just like citizens' comments about, guess what, the election. Some facts that should be open to everybody's ears and thoughts in the coming days. This coming Saturday, there will be a presentation about the election and the software systems. That's what this one was about, and it's very informative. I had an opportunity to discuss with Brian Cruz briefly the other day and asked him to open his ears and his mind to the fact that maybe he's been deceived by people running the election systems. Maybe the Secretary of State's been deceived. Who knows? But who is deceiving them? It seems that there are some, oh, excuse me, nonprofits in the background on a national basis. And names like George Earl's comes up. They go out and pay people that need help, need money, are standing on the street corners, and they get paid to deliver ballots to affect the outcome of the election, maybe even registrations. Those things need to be discussed because the majority of the population now is rather upset about it. But our politicians don't want to discuss it, and we want to know why. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none. We will move on to the committee reports and the finance committee. And item one is the budget report, and I take it that is as presented. Thank you. Item two is ARPA funding request to allocate ninety-five thousand to Creighton University to cover the cost of feasibility study of converting two, three soon-to-be vacant buildings owned into affordable housing, childcare, and other services. That's from my fund. There's no question out there. I'd ask for most to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is it second? Second by Commissioner Garcia. Seen, you got questions on this? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have a little trouble hearing today. Not usually. We're on finance committee, item two, three. Is that correct?
We're on two.
Okay. Once again, I'd like to ask, what happens when ARPA funding is not available? I think the average citizen is rarely confused as to why everybody is running for the money. The trough, which happens to be sort of like grants, but it's from the federal government. But unfortunately, I've paid into that fund over quite a few years. And I don't think that's the real intent of that money. To number one, Creighton University, if, if they own those buildings, why are we gonna, why are we gonna give them ninety-five thousand dollars? Let them spend their own money. And they have donors. Why raise my taxes for it? Oh, I'm sorry, you're going to the federal government. Why waste my money from the federal government for it? And then new business startups, excuse me? Can I come here and ask for a grant to start a new business? If so, I'm asking for that right today. Can I have a hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars today? Perhaps you should debate that and amend it before you pass it. Thank you.
Point of record, you actually can go to the state and write a grant to start a new business if you want to. So, you should do that, Larry. Anybody else? Please vote. Oops, sorry, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
On this grant to Creighton University of ninety-five thousand dollars for a feasibility study for converting three soon-to-be vacant buildings owned by Creighton, I'm looking at the backup documents here, and it says- I'm looking at the backup documents here, and it says three soon to be vacated buildings owned by Creighton in North Omaha into affordable housing, childcare and other community sources. And if I read this correctly, these are located at twenty ninth and Bird Street. Is that correct?
Right, so old dental school.
Oh, it is the dental school.
It's the dental school, it's the building to the west, which was the Chris Building. And then the building attached to the dental school is the health science, physical therapy building.
Okay. And the ninety five thousand, it won't go towards converting these buildings? It's just for a study of what to do with these buildings?
It's a feasibility study for a bigger to see if the project is viable.
Okay. I don't know that we've done anything, and I don't have any problem with this. I think, you know, converting those buildings to these kind of uses is probably a good thing. Would they still be under Creighton University ownership and control?
Yeah, but it may not be converting the building, maybe bringing the building down.
I'm sorry?
It may not be converting that building. It may be something totally different. The building could come down and start from scratch.
Okay. So the study is to to convert the building and or tear it down?
The part of the study is to see what the feasibility feasibility of this project is in that area. And I don't know if it would recommend it come down or be remodeled. Likely, it would probably be come down.
Okay. And who's gonna conduct the study?
That I don't know. Somebody local though, I knew that.
Okay. We don't have any other documentation for this other than what's attached here, is that right?
Right.
Is there anybody from Creighton on the Zoom or here to discuss this at all?
Nope, not separately, but I can answer that question.
I'm sorry?
Not separately, but I could answer the question.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm interested in this. I mean, you know, I'm a Creighton alum, and I've spent time on the campus there. I'm familiar with these structures now that we know what what they are. And I'm just interested in the process of what they're gonna be doing with them.
From what I can say, if the feasibility study pans out, there'll probably be a request to another pot of ARPA money to for a bigger project.
To complete the development of the properties?
If it pans out, because you need that to submit the show viability with a couple of other studies.
Okay. Do we have any idea of the timeframe that we're talking about here? Because, I mean, ARPA has a time limit on it. So is there any indication from Creighton of how long this feasibility study will take?
It'll be done within three months.
Three months?
Hopefully, yeah, that's what we're pushing for.
Okay. And this, I think we've all done this, is being funded from the ARPA set aside that that you have.
Yes.
Okay. We're not to number three, but I have a couple of questions on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, please vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Rogers abstains, all their commissioners voting yes.
Item three is ARPA funding approval resolution authorizing award one hundred and twelve thousand in ARPA funds to lifestyle, fitness, health and wellness to provide operational funding for a new business startup. Now, my understanding, Joe, is this Commissioner Borges's?
Yes.
Okay. And so is there a motion to approve item three? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, just second. Second by Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Kavanaugh. She's not here, so I don't know what those questions.
I don't know if there's anybody from lifestyle, fitness, health and wellness here as well?
Is anybody online?
Joe, these kind of go across your desk. Is lifestyle, lifestyle, fitness, health and wellness a for-profit entity?
Yes, it's a small business, right?
You've you've kind of reviewed this, and it's been to
Deloitte, yes. It's approved as a small business that was adversely impacted by the pandemic. And so it qualifies it for ARPA funding.
And I'm, you know, in favor of helping small businesses. As a matter of fact, I've got a couple that I'm doing as well. But as far as this goes, this entity, lifestyle, fitness, health and wellness, is in existence? They have a business entity in existence?
Yes, it started in like two thousand twenty. And so it started right during as the pandemic was coming on board. And so they were rolled out their services. And as they did that, they were adversely impacted by the pandemic. But it is a business that's been in existence for a couple of years.
Okay. As far as this operational funding for this new business startup, a business that's been in existence is not a startup. So could you clarify for us how that?
Well, it it was a startup during the pandemic. And and that's when it was, it's never really gotten its legs under it because it was a new business going through the pandemic. And so the the owners started up with a reserve of cash that basically was eaten up quicker than they expected. And now, in order to to keep the business as a going concern, they're requesting some ARPA funding to continue operations.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, this was started in two thousand twenty, is that right? And of course, they get right into the teeth of the pandemic. They had some difficulties, and this is stimulus money. You know, because we're going through this, and we'll be seeing this shortly with some locally owned restaurants, the impact is shown how exactly in this particular case?
I think it would be shown that their financial performance, their their cash flow has been lower than the original business plan. And that was primarily due to the obstacles that they ran across by trying to get their business up and running during the pandemic. And so that ate up more cash than they were anticipating.
Okay. You know, and this kind of goes to there's a phrase, I think, of showing the impact of ARPA or of COVID on your business to qualify for ARPA. This proof of impact was, we had a business plan that projected some incomes. We did not reach those incomes, and so there's the impact. Is that?
That's the adverse impact, yes.
Okay. There wasn't an actual, because they started in two thousand twenty, prior years, gross revenues to compare.
No, and and that's why there were some other programs out there, like through the state of Nebraska. But because they didn't have that prior history, they couldn't show a decrease in revenues. So that's that's why they didn't qualify for that 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 program through the state and why they came to the county to get this ARPA funding.
Okay, so we can fund people who were startups without their showing a prior year's income and then an impacted but they've got other proofs like a business plan where it projected?
Yes, that that's what Deloitte says, yes.
Okay.
One minute.
And the business plan that they submitted to us had been drafted in that period of nineteen twenty or whatever. It wasn't, it wasn't a subsequent business plan that they submitted. It was a business plan that they'd had originally.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Friend.
Yep. Yeah, thanks, thanks a lot. Just looking through the supplementary information that we have on this, it looks like this business is really into into physical activity as a form of of not only physical health, but mental health. And this is an organization that's trying to have a lot of community events, physical events like bike rides and basketball camps and things like that, too. So especially since we know how how things like COVID and at home learning has been detrimental to the health of kids. I think knowing that this type of organization is also vested in in helping with that, I think, is a good thing. So I think some of the statistics they also tell us is that the Waterloo and Valley have a lower life expectancy than surrounding communities as outlined by UNMC study. And it's, it has to do with rural obesity rates as well. So so to know that there's something out there that's that will help meet that need, I think, is an important one. So so just looking at the supportive information that that we have, that's why I made a motion to approve. That's it, yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair, I want to, I I know a little bit, I know a little bit about everything, just to ask me. I know a little bit about this this facility, and I know enough to probably be dangerous. Let me, let me give you a little, hopefully a short diatribe. A few years ago, way before the pandemic, this was where where Mr. Bartholomew and Lifestyle Fitness actually exists and was renovated was the old middle school, D.C. West Middle School. And there were some problems with that middle school. We, in a, in a the Douglas County West School District essentially started some other infrastructure projects, moved the middle school, and this one actually had there were some flooding issues, and there were there were issues. There were, there were mitigation issues that had to actually occur in that infrastructure, that that building. What? So that's a little bit of history, infrastructure wise, about what's going on out there and what this place looks like. Second key aspect to the, so that's pretty important. We're talking about something in Waterloo, and anybody that's been out to Waterloo knows that there is growth, but it's selective growth. It's in certain areas, and it's and it's development based. But that certain area of Waterloo, I would, I would say, I wouldn't use the term substandard and blighted, it's not, but there are issues in regard to development, future development. So that's one thing. Second thing, real quick, is what life's, they're they're in Valley, at Westview High School, where, close to where I live, in a lot of different areas of this community. We have YMCA's, and we have all kinds of things popping up that are that are providing, to Commissioner Boyle's point, the type of wellness and and type of exercise and type of social interaction. And Waterloo, for lack of a better term, doesn't have any of that. And I think what Lifestyle is actually providing, and if you go through some of the paperwork, which I did last week, that Mr. Bartholomew provided, there's a void, and they're filling it. And I don't know if it's worth a hundred and twelve million dollars, but it's worth something. And I think that they're gonna be able to really do some pretty neat things. So I'm an advocate. And by the way, here's the final point. We've been talking about this stuff for two years. We had CARES money that came in before I got onto this board. And we were spending it because the feds told us we could. And now we've got, now at one point, we had a hundred and ten million dollars that we could spend because the feds told us we could. And the trouble with this is, and this sounds a little bit like rant standing, the trouble with this is, you give somebody carte blanche, and short of what Deloitte is doing, and short of what a lot of folks are doing and keeping an eye on all this stuff, it is carte blanche. They essentially tell you, you gotta spend it, or it's gone. And the problem I have with this whole thing for the last two and a half years is the federal government spending like drunken sailors and then telling us we have to spend like drunken sailors. We don't have any choice. We got to get rid of the money. You wonder why our economy's messed up right now? You want me to go off on a tangent? How much time do I have? You want to know why our economy's messed up right now at eight point two five percent inflation rates? It's because we have inundated this economy with so much cash that we don't have to verify, that we don't have to produce anything. There's no gross domestic product associated with it. Now we're worried about a guy who's actually developing, well, I don't know if we're worried about it. Jim Jim was just asking questions, and Maureen was too. But we're a little bit concerned about a guy who's actually trying to develop something or any other business in Omaha, trying to develop something that's gonna help people. Folks, I've seen it, I know there's value. But I'm not sure there's any value to any of this COVID money that we've received because the end result is going to be something that we're gonna be dealing with five years from now, six years from now, ten years from now. And let's let our kids handle it. That's the end of my rant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I think that the the point that I am interested in here is that we're finally giving some relief to local for-profit businesses. The first that we did in that category was a project in in Ralston that I proposed that was ARPA funded recently to help a Main Street development there. And we've got one coming that will help small locally owned restaurants in our community. I think this is long overdue, and we should do more of it. So I'm, you know, in favor of these types of things. The question that I was asking Joe about goes to the attestation part of the COVID impact, which is kind of a key thing. If you have a business, you should show that COVID impacted your business in order to qualify for the ARPA funding. And as Joe indicated, in this case, there wasn't a book of business for the previous pre-COVID year of basically two thousand nineteen to compare to the COVID year of two thousand twenty, or you could compare two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one, to show that impact. That's called attestation, and means here, I'm showing you that there was an actual impact. In this case, it's based on a business plan. I think in the Small Business Restaurant Grant Program, they're gonna be actually showing an impact from one year's book of business to the next year's book of business, which is, you know, pretty definitive in terms of COVID impacted my business. This is good stuff, and I encourage my colleagues to support it. And I would also encourage them to look at the one that we're gonna do for the small locally owned restaurants, which should be expanded, if possible, in the ARPA funding that we've got coming on to kind of replicate what Lincoln Lancaster County did. I think our restaurant grant program is coming in about seven hundred thousand dollars. Lincoln Lancaster did a similar program for seven million dollars. And in light of the fact that we've spent tens of millions of dollars of ARPA funds already, and CARES before that, without much, if any, other than the ones we're talking about going to the for-profit community, I think it calls for us to help the people who provide services and jobs and pay taxes in this community and have been impacted by COVID to get some relief from these funds. It's primarily gone to government entities and not-for-profits up till now. And I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with that. I'm just saying it's time that we address the needs of our small business for-profit community as well. And not just limited, in this case, to fitness services or in the case of the Ralston program to Main Street Development or to just restaurants in the upcoming Restaurant Grant Act, but expand it into other impacted areas because there are clearly a lot of small businesses that were providing human services. I I just use anybody that was in the personal care business, say hair care or massage care or anything like that, were pretty much prevented from doing business for a period of the COVID pandemic because of the constraints of the pandemic. And so we should look at those as well as the hospitality industry and the beverage industry in our community to see if we can do what Lincoln did and maybe expand this going forward in the COVID thing. In the meantime, I would, you know, support this and the
One minute.
Grant program that we're gonna have coming up shortly for restaurants in our community. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item D is Community Service Committee. We're gonna take one and two together. They are tied because we had an action last week. This, number one, just as a resolution sets the public hearing date for September thirteenth of two thousand twenty two to consider the golf course ordinance. And two, direct, the board directs the county attorney and the administration to draft a proposed ordinance to be considered at that public hearing for the golf golf cart operation at SID five five nine. to be considered at that public hearing for the golf, golf cart operation at SID 559 Indian Point and SID 580 Indian Point Two in Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve A, uh, one and two?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I apologize for interrupting. We wanted to, for, um, for D one, which is the, uh, county ordinance that's further on in the process, we did wanna make a correction, uh, to that ordinance and it's just changing one of the statute, statute numbers. So if I may, I would ask the board to also include direction to the county attorney's office to provide that to the county clerk after this meeting. Or I can do it by interlineation right now as we sit here.
Is there a motion?
Either way, fine.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Is there a motion to approve one and two with the recommended changes from legal counsel to one? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Seeing no questions, roll call.
Give me one moment, please. And, uh, Commissioner, could you repeat the, uh, motion at second on that one, please?
Commissioner Morgan first, Commissioner Boyle second.
Okay. All right, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go to G, which is the Human Resource Committee. Item one, a weekly personnel report and civil services is as submitted. Item two, there are no legislative issues this week, uh, and we do have a need for an executive session for personnel, labor, and litigation.
So we have labor negotiations, we have contract negotiations. So we're talking about, um, contracts involving, uh, landfill and nine-one-one contract, not union negotiation, but just contract negotiations.
So there's no labor, it's contract?
So there's labor as well.
Okay.
And then is there, is there security, you have something for security as well?
Yes, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I have down for topics, uh, personnel, security, labor negotiations, contract negotiations, legal advice, and litigation, so.
Then those will be noted by the clerk? Is there a motion to go into executive session for those matters? It's motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six to zero.
The motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 12:22 PM.
Motion due, reconvened and adjourned by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. The motion passes four to zero. We're adjourned at 12:22 PM.